Berry residents and environmental activists gathered at Berry City Hall during last Wednesday's city council meeting to show support for relocating the proposed sports field away from Berry's waterfront. Brian Miller, speaking on behalf of the Friends of Allendale Station Park, supported relocation to Berry Central College at Institute at 125 Dunlop Street West. However, he opposed the proposed minimum two-acre allocation for a parking lot at the waterfront.
With Mayor Nuttall's comment, "deem it for purpose," we recommend that Allendale Station Park be clearly rezoned to a restrictive level of environmental protected area or possibly even a nature conservancy area to avoid any future controversy here, and ensuring that Allendale Station Park remains a passive naturalized park that can be enjoyed by residents, visitors, and future generations.
The Friends of Allendale Station Park have been advocating for the relocation since July after Berry City Council decided to construct a sports field using plastic astroturf. The group raised concerns about potential microplastic pollution in Lake Simcoe and possible harm to ecosystem due to tree removal. A link to our coverage of the July protest is available in the YouTube video description below. Arnie Ivstens, head of the South Shore Nature Park Task Force, also supported the relocation and opposed the minimum two-acre requirement for the parking lot.
Recognizing council has accepted recommendations of the report, the task force in a show of good faith would agree to some mowing for overflow parking, but not to the extent of the amendment of a minimum two acres. A minimum two-acre cut would require a cut 36 meters by 230 meters or 118 feet into all of Allendale Station Park, removing vegetation, including the sumacs and the trembling aspen woodland.
Dorothy Mackeven of Nature Berry advocated for a maximum of 0.6 acre of grass-cut area for parking. In the end, at the recommendation of Mayor Alex Nuttall, city council decided to wait for staff to develop a design concept to assess the necessity of moving space at the waterfront.
Okay, folks, we have got here, and we have got, I think, a very good plan that's going to support getting a performing arts center built, which is something that I didn't believe that we had two years ago due to cost. I think we've got a better location for you. It's not as big, as large, doesn't have as many performance spaces, but I think it's something that we can actually bite into and get done.
Following is the video of our coverage of the meeting.
We're going to now move on to deputations. We have four deputations and one emergency deputation request regarding 24G 223 waterfront public consultation feedback. So in accordance with the city's procedural bylaw, each deputation will be permitted a maximum of five minutes to speak. So I will call upon Brian Miller on behalf of Friends of Allendale Station Park to approach the podium to deliver your deputation, sir you of five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Nuttall. Members of council, my name is Brian Miller. I live in Berry. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Friends of Allendale Station Park. Our group consists of citizens who reside throughout our city and our neighboring communities. We care about maintaining Allendale Station Park as a naturalized area, and we have been opposed to the multipurpose field proposed at Allendale Station Park. We are pleased that Berry Council has identified a new vision and path forward in finding an alternative location for the multipurpose field, along with designing Allendale Station Park as a passive park, along with accessible walkways through the naturalized area. The recommendation of a passive park is consistent with what was identified several years ago, maintaining and enhancing a naturalized area by leaving it relatively untouched at the naked eye and providing education on nature. As Deputy Mayor Thompson stated, allowing all residents to enjoy some of our naturalized areas of our waterfront while maintaining the beauty it is. The motion is, it currently reads, basically directs staff to design a passive park and to ensure the area has a minimum of two acres designated for overflow parking. Our group has a concern with this minimum allotment of two acres of cut grass area for overflow parking for historical events. We recognize that a passive play area has also been identified in the area, but we feel the minimum acreage for parking is excessive. In the past, there's been little to no control with where and how vehicles park in this area. Temporary barricades have been knocked over and/or moved with vehicles parked immediately adjacent to Military Heritage Park. These flimsy barricades just aren't satisfactory. During wet weather, the area becomes a field of mud caused by the excessive number of vehicles being allowed in the area. I recognize that I and others may not have raised these concerns in the past, but just because people haven't complained doesn't mean this practice should be allowed to continue. As a city, we're trying to promote active transportation and encourage the use of public transportation. According to the city website, you can park 1,670 vehicles at the Paul Sadlin Center, which is only a short bus ride away. The Allendale Rec Center and the Berry Curling Club have also been used as alternative shuttle service parking locations. Council should be promoting parking off-site and taking shuttles as opposed to supporting the successive allotment for parking. In saying this, we encourage council to reduce the minimum acreage currently identified in the motion for overflow parking. Our group also requests a zoning change for Allendale Station Park.
In favor of the emergency deputation.
That's unanimous.
That permits the development of sports fields, applicable accessories such as bleachers, clubhouse. And it will proceed after the initial four requests.
I know why we're here, right?
So in accordance with the city's procedural bylaw, each deputation will be permitted a maximum of five minutes to speak. So I will call upon Brian Miller on behalf of Friends of Allendale Station Park to approach the podium to deliver your deputation, sir you of five minutes.
There is no requirement for a public meeting or consultation, providing that there are no zoning changes needed. In reviewing the current wording and official plan and its mapping, along with the new proposed zoning bylaw, both are very comprehensive and difficult documents to understand for the layperson. From what I have read, it appears that Allendale Station Park has been designated as green space, which permits active recreation and/or playing fields. Within draft three of the proposed zoning bylaw, environmental protection area also includes outdoor recreation. So one may assume this terminology could include a future sports field. This proposed zoning and what is permitted needs to be addressed and changed. Hopefully you'll consider that. To remain consistent with Mayor Nuttall's comment, deem it for purpose, we recommend that Allendale Station Park be clearly rezoned to a restrictive level of environmental protected area or possibly even a nature conservancy area to avoid any future controversy here, and ensuring that Allendale Station Park remains a passive naturalized park that can be enjoyed by residents, visitors, and future generations. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll now invite Arnie Ivstens on behalf of the South Shore Nature Park Task Force.
Good evening, Mayor Nuttall, student mayor Sina, and council members and staff. I'm here this evening on behalf of the South Shore Nature Park Task Force, a collection of individuals who are concerned about the future of Allendale Station Park. This collective was assembled shortly after Marshall Green and Bill Scott released their report, "The South Shore, Berry Sports, and Revitalize Downtown," and is made up of representatives from First Nations, various environmental groups, scientists, and ecologists, and planners. Mr. Green and Mr. Scott are resource advisors to the task force. The task force acknowledges and is very pleased that council accepted the recommendations in the aforementioned report to build a multi-use sports field at another location. However, an amendment that was put forth on October the 9th has raised some concerns. It reads in part, "For, that development services staff prepare a design concept to locate a passive park east of the Allendale Train Station," and I believe, Mayor Nuttall, you corrected that to Allendale Station Park that night, "to include a minimum of two acres of grass-cut area to allow for overflow parking for historical events that will occur on the property and accessible walkways through the naturalized area," and report back to General Committee the concept and costing. The task force prefers that this area be kept natural and not mowed other than for pedestrian traffic. The city's waterfront strategic plan 2023 deems this area, in quotes, "eco-education, naturalization, and restoring the meadow to a dedicated oak savanna." Mowing reduces the usable land for such purposes. So society has learned that because something was always done, doesn't mean it was always the right thing to do. A task force member, an ecologist, pointed out that the soil in the tree root zones can be compacted by vehicles and machinery, especially if the soil is wet or saturated. Mowing this area also affects resident and migrating ground nesting birds and many birds' food source. Recognizing council has accepted the recommendations of the report, the task force in a show of good faith would agree to some mowing for overflow parking, but not to the extent of the amendment of a minimum two acres. Bill Scott and myself measured Allendale Station Park last week. The current mowed area along Lakeshore is a strip of 11 meters by 230 meters or 36 feet by 755 feet, which is .610 of an acre. For last year's Kempin Fest, the area mowed was approximately 1.5 acres with a significant space between two rows of vehicles. It also cut an additional 18 meters into the cultural meadow. A minimum two-acre cut would require a cut 36 meters by 230 meters or 118 feet into all of Allendale Station Park, removing vegetation, including the sumacs and the trembling aspen woodland. Included is Mr. Scott's map, along with photos from last year's Kempin Fest, and I sent those last week with my request. I'm not sure if they're available. In summary, the task force prefers that the area be left as is, with shuttle services, increased transit, and permit signs covered over along Lakeshore to encourage on-street parking for events. In lieu of that, we would ask that the maximum mowing cuts stay at the current mowed area of 11 meters or .610 of an acre for parking and pedestrians' traffic. I also submitted a discussion paper that the task force is working on since August and our vision of a naturalized yet vibrant Allendale Station Park. We, along with volunteers and community groups, are here ready and willing to help develop this vital piece of Berry's waterfront for residents and visitors alike. We are confident that city staff, with their own expertise, will undertake this project with many of the recommendations we've made and come back with great options. We also look forward to a comprehensive public feedback process on the design and implementation of this. And seeing that I have about a minute or so, and are those photos available? Or no, I'm not sure who to ask. Okay. They were circ-- okay, so the public can't see them, but basically, I took a picture at last year's Kempin Fest with two rows of vehicles, and there's a space between that you could have driven transport trucks in both directions going back and forth. The amount that was removed was roughly, as Mr. Scott said, about an acre and a half. So if you're going to cut out two acres of this land, you're going to have to remove some vegetation, and the map was also submitted to council that you could look and see. Otherwise, if you just stay where things are now, at 11 meters in, there's plenty enough room for cars to park, and a vehicle can drive behind that parked car, and there'd be no problems around that. Thank you for your time for listening. I appreciate it.
Question of clarity, so like what from your deputation, you would like to see what was done last year instead of the recommended two acres as we've requested?
That's a tough question, Deputy Mayor. Last year was an acre and a half. Basically, what happens with the 18, in Mr. Scott's diagram, you'll see the green line is 18 meters going straight across, which is one acre right clear across. What happened last year was they did that one acre, but then they also went a further 18 meters into the meadow area. So last year, that was basically an acre and a half of what was mowed last year, and it's excessive. Maybe I shouldn't say this, but if council would come back and say, like, concern is the word "minimum." When it says "minimum two acres," that raises a lot of concerns. If amendment was put forth that said a maximum of, say, one acre, then we could work with staff and see, you know, plot out different areas and strategies. As our ecologist pointed out, when you park the vehicles beside, right beside the trees like they did last year, it damages the trees. It hurts them. So we could discuss with staff and say, well, okay, maybe leave that tree line alone, and vehicles can park maybe between that and the sumacs and the aspen, the thicket sort of thing. So our concern is the maximum asked here as opposed to a minimum. And like Mr. Miller said, if the amendment had read "minimum two acres," then again, that's something that we can maybe, I don't want you to negotiate, but come to some common agreement with staff. So, and what's that old story, you ask for, ask for more than you can get, right? So if the amendment was put forth, or somebody put a amendment that said a maximum of one acre, that is something that we could work with.
Is it a follow-up for Ms. Ivstens?
Uh, no, it's actually through you to staff.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Mr. Rankin. Can you, can you tell us what we mowed last year at that area?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. Last year, as in this particular past, prior to Kempin Fest, the area of raffcut mowing was about 3.2 acres.
Okay, and then, and then with some of the other data we've received, we've had up to almost six acres at one time, too. I think, I'm only, I think it was in 2007, we mowed about 5.4 or something, so six? So just, and, and just to, just to keep that, you know, that we did receive, and we've been looking at the emails we've received and stuff like that, just to keep the facts that, you know, true, that it was three and almost over three acres last year, and we've cut up to almost six acres, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm not seeing any other questions, so Ms. Ivstens, thank you for your deputation. I'm going to call upon Randy Taylor to come and make his deputation this evening. Mr. Taylor, the microphone's yours.
Good evening, Mayor Nuttall, councillors, and city staff, and my fellow citizens of Berry. First of all, I'd like to thank Berry Council for approving the motion to approve Marshall Green's visionary plan for South Shore, for Berry Sports, and Revitalize Downtown. And I'm hoping that tonight, if I have my facts straight, you guys are going to ratify that plan, and we can put that to bed and do a good job for Berry. But I'm here tonight not to talk about Marshall's great plan, more so I'm here to speak about the amendment and the designate to, to remove the two acres of grass. And as a result of that, for cutting, to be honest, I was very surprised that council would put that in. And I'm going to tell you why. First of all, residents of Berry have consistently been very strongly opposed to any previous plans to build baseball fields, sports fields, or any other man-made kinds of devices in this area. So the idea to formalize and legitimize a parking lot is not going to be appreciated. And I think, you know, like, I don't think anybody should be surprised if there's pushback on this. I mean, this, if you're listening to the people, they're not going to want that. Now, I'm personally not aware of any initiatives that the city of Berry or council has done to secure resident feedback to this idea. I don't know if you've talked to anybody, or this was just a council idea. But the question I have is why wasn't this idea floated at the recent engagement process we had at the General Hader Community Center? That would be a perfect opportunity to have asked people that. I mean, we asked them all these other points that Marshall Green had put up, but I don't recall that one being asked. And I don't recall that Marshall Green's plan had recommended that either, so, you know, so I just find that all sort of a little bothering. Lakefront and parking are issues which are only going to get worse as the city of Berry continues to grow. I mean, this is a beautiful city, a lot of growth projected, and these issues are just going to get bigger and bigger. So my recommendation to council, first of all, do not use Allendale Station Park as a site for any overflow parking. I say one car is too many unless it's a city vehicle. Sorry, guys, but it's, you know, I don't, I don't think we want parking there. Second of all, ask the Berry Transit Vision Team to include lakefront traffic and parking as part of their plan, specifically with how it pertains to heritage events such as Kempin Fest. The solution to accommodating large numbers of people at the waterfront is not just adding more vehicle parking spots. There's a lot of other ways to do that, and I'm sure that the Transit Vision Team can come up with a bunch of those. Three, direct city planners to search for and recommend shorter-term parking solutions until such time as the Berry Transit Visions Team is able to produce approaches that are approved by council to be implemented. So, you know, it's going to take probably a little bit of time to put the longer-term vision in, but in the interim, you know, you do need some parking somewhere. And fourthly, let the city work with the South Shore Nature Park Task Force to develop a beautiful environmental space for all citizens of Berry to enjoy rather than creating a parking lot. So in conclusion, I just want to quote a famous Canadian by the name of Joni Mitchell, who penned lyrics to the effect that they paved paradise and put up a parking lot. And so I say to Berry Council, don't you be known as the council who will be remembered as they mowed paradise and put up a parking lot. So I thank you very much for your attention, and have a good evening.
Mr. Taylor, I'm just going to, I just want to correct a couple of things there, if that's okay, because I think we, accuracy matters. Quote, "My instructions from the mayor were that if I was going to recommend that this is part of the South Shore be preserved in its current natural form, that it be usable by all citizens, old, young, able-bodied, and handicapped. I challenge certain of the objectors to pick up that challenge. One such response is set out in the sample diagram attached in figure three. Obviously, this was not something that could be recommended without thorough review by the various responsible agencies like the city's own parks officials. However, it does show the potential. I also challenge the same organizations to volunteer their time and seek the help of service clubs to provide the labor. They've agreed. However, there's need to make this natural area usable as the mayor has asked by all citizens. From other work I'm doing with seniors, I know growing emphasis on an intergenerational aspect to service, especially those by government. To that end, I'm suggesting, though not making it a formal recommendation, that a part of this 'natural area,' in quotation marks, parentheses, say, two acres, end parenthesis, be set aside for youth. Nothing formal, no fancy equipment, just a cleared area where young people can kick a soccer ball around, play a game of catch, maybe the grandparents with their grandchildren, or some other less formal activity that others who are using this area can sit on a bench and watch." That, that's the Marshall Green report. So the two acres is in the Marshall Green report.
Not for a parking lot.
And the mowed two acres is inside of the Marshall Green report. In terms of the, in terms of the, in terms of the use of that, which is what I was going to ask you, is, do you support that? Like, like you're saying, don't mow and put parking in, so do you support this but not the parking?
I support Marshall Green's plan.
Any, Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. Just maybe a follow-up question to Mr. Rankin or staff. So understanding in the past decade and a half, we have cut anywhere from three acres to six acres, from what I understand, have we received any complaints over the past decade and a half in regards to the cutting that's taken place there that we're aware of? And I know people might not agree with it, it might not formally complain, but lots of people do complain, so I'm just trying to gauge how many complaints we fielded. Is this something that's coming up year over year?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Counselor Hamilton. This is the first year we received complaints related to the mowing of that grass for the overflow parking?
Thank you, and if I may ask another question. Every year then, so knowing that the, the size of the area that is cut, whether it's three acres, four or five, six acres, as we've seen over the past decade, what, what determines or who determines how much gets cut year over year? And I assume that's not just to accommodate parking for Kempin Fest. I assume that's sort of a standard that we do for the year, or can you explain a little bit in terms of the process of how it's determined what area to cut?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Counselor Ham, Counselor Hamilton. The area of cutting has been reducing over the years mainly because of the sumacs and the poplars that are growing into the grassland that's been taking place over the past 20-plus years. So that's the main reason why the area of mowing has slowly reduced over time from six, almost 20 years ago, down to three, three and a bit this year. And the other aspect of your question related to how we make the decision to cut it, it's the staff will go out and, and mow that prior to Kempin Fest, because that's when the overflow parking happens, the main part of it, but they also do it ahead of other events and have done it sometimes for a major event in the spring, maybe for Celebrate Berry, et cetera, if it, if it's needed. And we usually also were doing some of that mowing later in the fall to knock down some of the perennial weeds and stuff to get some of that seed bank out so that the grasses can come back, and there's a little less competition for those.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to staff, and I don't know if this would be misread. Who performed the survey? And I know, like, did it run through your department? I know it was a third party that did the Kempin Fest stuff. Would you have the results of that or be able to, just, I don't want to misquote information, but one part of it was, one of the deterrents, oh, you have it, Counselor Hamilton, I think one of the deterrents of Kempin Fest was, in a 42%, somewhere in that range, was parking. As, as most of the vendors, you know, occupy the typical parking spots to, to perform that. Is that, and I know Counselor Hamilton, I guess, has the report in front of him?
I have it in front of me here, just because I looked it up today. Forty-two percent of respondents on the 2024 Kempin Fest survey indicated that parking is a top barrier to attending and a cause of dissatisfaction with the festival.
Okay, thanks. And, and maybe this just is a quote and stuff, so I think we've also got to look at some stuff and just pulling some numbers. So the, the economic impact of these events that are occurring here, so total economic impact of this year's airshow was 11--
Deputy Mayor, I'll just remind you that this is a time to ask questions and not statements. So if you want to put it in the form, or we can wait to the actual debate, whatever works for you.
So I actually, you know what, I will ask Ms. Schlickler if she could maybe quote or give us the numbers of the economic impact of both of those regional events we hosted this year.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Yes, I can do that. So for the barrier share, or through you, Mayor Nuttall, through to Deputy Mayor Thompson, 2024 airshow direct economic impact, we estimated at just about 6.8 million. Total economic impact, so directed and indirect, at 11.345. And bear with me here, I'm just pulling up the other piece of information. And then Kempin Fest provided a report, or a presentation to council, and they indicated, based on local and, local attendee per head expenditure totaled approximately 18.7 million. For tourist attendee, they estimated 10.2 million for a total gross expenditure of 28.9 million.
Counselor Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Appreciate the questions and certainly appreciate the deputations to this point. I have a question through you to staff, just again, to really try to, you know, put this back in context. The plan is not, maybe through to Ms. Banfield, obviously, we're waiting and we're excited to have the plan that will come at some point to General Committee, but just to clarify for everybody, we're not planning on putting a parking lot at this location. We're planning to cut the area and occasionally for these large festivals, use it for overflow parking, but there's no intention for this to be an area for parking.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Counselor Harris. That's correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that back in context because we're, we're focusing on the, the exception, not the rule, but I do like the reminder, and I thank you, Mayor Nuttall, for the latitude around the two acres that would be dedicated to that family recreation activity space for young people. And I'm not, ironically, soccer was here tonight celebrating a success. I remember when this first-- people and families to enjoy that South Shore along with the naturalized area would be a wonderful compromise, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other, sorry, councillor Corsor, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to, I guess, Mr. Rankin or other staff that may be able to answer this. Just for, as this, this, when this area is used for parking, is parking allowed there during inclement weather, like rainstorms?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Corsor. In the, in the event of a rainstorm, you mean during Kempin Fest, if it was pouring rain? I can't think of any situations where we've gone out and actively moved people out of that area during an overflow situation. I, maybe a better question for more some services, whether or not they would go in and, and deal with it, but...
Just, yeah.
Mayor Nuttall, through you, to councillor Corsor. They, the parking in the informal area is not actively enforced, it's not a structured parking area, and there are no prohibitions on parking during inclement weather, so there would be no ability to enforce specifically because of inclement weather.
Okay, that kind of leads into my next question, which is, how is it parking controlled? Is there security guards? There was a mention of barriers, I just want to confirm if that's correct, because what is stopping people, because we know that during events, particularly I heard of at the airshow, about certain vehicles being blocked in and people having to drive over curbs and all sorts of shenanigans in our waterfront because of the parking issues. I'm just wondering, is this area controlled by security or barriers to ensure that parking does not bleed into protected areas? I'm not sure who wants to take a stab at that one.
Mayor Nuttall, through you, to councillor Corsor. Event organizers have some responsibility for parking. If there were situations where emergency access was impacted, then enforcement would address those, but beyond that, that, that is the extent of the enforcement. There aren't designated spaces, so it, it, as an informal area, it is not signed for any particular areas. The barricades are intended to protect the sensitive aspects of the site, but there are, there aren't particular security guards at each site all day, all the time.
Just a follow-up to that, if I may. So if this is moving forward as a designated parking area for events only, with the understanding that we're going to have a naturalized park, would staff be looking at maybe putting some more protective measures in place to protect the areas that would be naturalized? Is that something that staff is investigating or looking at moving forward?
Mayor Nuttall, through you, to councillor Corsor. If council designated it as a protected area, then it would become a requirement through our special events permitting. It wouldn't necessarily be staff that would be enforcing it. It may be a requirement of the event organizer to ensure that's enforced, but it would require a specific designation.
Okay, and as the motion stands now, is that specific designation in place, or is that something that's going to be coming further ahead once reports come back from staff?
I'm not sure I'm the, the right person to answer the question, but at this point in time, Mayor Nuttall, through you, to councillor Corsor. I don't believe that's specifically identified in terms of the delineation between the naturalized area and any mowed area. It just identifies the general amount of mowed area that may be possible to be considered at this point in time in the motion.
So, oh, yes.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Corsor. Staff really are waiting for the direction this evening to, to take, to look at things and take things back. There's no preconceived ideas of, of what that study is going to report back to council. We haven't looked at it closely. We're waiting for this direction this evening to, to report back.
Okay, and a couple of other questions, if I may. We, we are working, I believe, I could be wrong on this, but we are, we're currently working on developing better planning for mitigating downtown parking overflow in, during bigger events, because the airshow and other events, as we grow as a city, as we get more popular, as we do want to through tourism, we're going to have more impact of parking in the downtown core. So looking future forward, is staff currently doing any planning or any investigation of how we can mitigate traffic issues in the downtown? Like, I know that there's discussions of shuttle buses, but, and they're used occasionally, but is this going to be something that will be set in place as practice for larger events?
Councillor, I'm going to ask Ms. James Reed to answer that for you. Just before you do, I just want to highlight, if you support this motion tonight, you're supporting an actual reduction in parking down on the waterfront. Ms. James Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Through you, to councillor Corsor. We, we always are looking at parking and overflow parking, particularly in the downtown area, probably more focused on the downtown than on, on this area from a parking, paid parking perspective. But I did also want to note that we are having a report coming to council end of November with respect to some changes that we're recommending on transit for Phase Two, and one of the changes does include a proposal to bring bus service along lakeshore, which I think will help to address some of these issues that we've had with different big events, and that would be a regular occurrence on a daily basis for transit service.
Okay, thank you, because the maximum parking, that would be a concern, because a maximum as opposed to a minimum would suggest, would it suggest to staff that as pressures move forward, would we, a minimum of two leads to bleed out in situations where tourism dollars are in play, so would that, would staff looks at a minimum? I'm just wondering what type of leeway a minimum of two acres says to staff? Like, would staff have to come back to council to ask for three acres after that, or four acres, or would staff be able to, after this amendment, to take that forward and use that as they, they feel is necessary?
Sorry, before you answer that, Ms. Banfield, which amendment are we talking about?
The, the two, two acres minimum, or two, yeah, minimum of two acres of parking.
Okay, so just, so everyone's on the same page here. There is no amendment. That's the motion as adopted from General Committee. Ms. Banfield, I'll pass to you.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Corsor. If this direction is given to staff and we do research and it ends up that one and a half acres, as, as an example, is the right number, staff will advise council of that recommendation and council can decide at that point. And I think that that's probably the, the best way to answer and leave things for this evening. Staff understand and we're listening to this conversation, we understand the intent, and we will make sure that council has all the information that they need when it comes back.
So if I may just to clarify, we, we are voting tonight to have a report come back to us to discuss what the report, and at that time, there will be more conversations around the table about what the staff findings are, correct? Yeah. I just want to make sure that our, our members of our audience understand that as well. Is that correct?
Madam Clerk, with regards to the motion that's being, that we're receiving deputations on this evening, could you read out the final piece of it so that it describes what the next steps are?
Just bear with me for two seconds, Mayor.
Absolutely.
And to members, through Mayor Nuttall, to members of council, the, all the park items, the majority of the items in the motion are requiring a report back to General Committee. So that includes the, any due diligence work on the Performing Arts Centre, that can, that also concerns the park, the parkland, the Sea Cadet's parade ground, as well as the, the two acres of grass cut area that was requested. So all of, all of those items in that motion will be coming back to General Committee at some point.
And just one last question...
Do you have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I'm so sorry.
Because he's been standing for a while.
I am so sorry, Mr. Taylor.
I think you're good to sit down, Mr. Taylor. Sorry about that.
My apologies. Just, one last question, just to make it all crystal clear, that, so when that, that report comes back, we will be able to pull out pieces to discuss, is that correct?
Well, I think the reports are not going to come back in unison, so each item will come back as it's ready. We've said to staff in this, what's been adopted so far, please go look at these things and report back on them. That won't be one report, there'll be many different reports, unless they get it all done at once, which is highly unlikely.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you, staff.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to Dorothy McKeon on behalf of Nature Berry. Dorothy, the floor is yours and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Alex, councillors and city staff. I'm here on behalf of Nature Berry, founded as a Barrington Field Naturist Club in 1951. We've been working with council and staff for 65 years, as long as Barry has been an incorporated city, working to safeguard and educate the public about Barry's natural spaces and species for its citizens, visitors and the next generations. We endeavor to be good land stewards as our Williams Treaty First Nations partners, the Anishinaabe, assumed that we would. Nature Berry is pleased that council has accepted the recommendations of the Marshall Green report to build a sports field elsewhere than the Allendale Station Park, but of course, we also have concerns about the motion about the minimum two acres of grass mowed. Now, we may have misunderstood, but to us it looked like, because a football field is 1.3 acres, the present mowed area that Arnie and Belle Scott measured was 0.6 acres, to us it looked like you were replacing a football field, a football field with a parking, with a parking area. But I'm, so I'm glad I came after to have that interpreted. We propose that the motion be changed to either a maximum of 0.6 acres of grass cut area for the parking, or that you take out the minimum and maximum, and as we will be working it out with the, the task force and the development as to where the mowed area will be and at what amounts. I myself enjoy attending the airshow and Kempin Fest, and, but as, even as a senior with arthritis, I walk or bike to the waterfront with my extended family or take the shuttle buses with friends, because I assume convenient parking is not going to be as, as close to the events as it is. If you've ever gone to Toronto, you know that usually doesn't happen. It is not a good climate change strategy to promote driving while mowing natural areas that cool and oxygenate the area. We can work with event and park staff to come up with other strategies, such as promoting use of go-trains, metro links and shuttle services that drop off attendees closer to the activities than most parking spots, perhaps provide more angled parking on side streets, more shuttle services from other parking lots with EV chargers, because of course, that's going to be coming up in the future, and add more bike racks. According to the City of Barry Parks Horticulture and Forestry Operations Review of October 2nd, natural heritage areas are the lowest cost per acre per year. Mowing is the greatest cost per year, so the city could save money with less mowing. As a city that promotes itself as a bird and bee-friendly city, taking more natural areas away goes against the mandates of these designations. Now I'd like to address the problems of mowing during these times for the birds and the bees or butterflies that would be attracted to our native plants in the planned naturalized park area. The airshow takes place, and remember, I like to attend these events. The airshow takes place in mid-June when most birds are nesting with eggs or chicks. Ground nesting birds, such as Vanessparas eastern meadow larks, which are an Ontario species at risk, have been observed in this grassland area, and as migratory birds, their nests are protected by international laws. We don't want to call in the lawyers. Kempin Fest takes place in early August. This year, we found our nest box birds were still in second nestings in August, whose chicks had all died when there was a cold spell in June. The same can happen in a heat spell, causing chick mortality or a wet spell when insect food sources are scarce, causing starvation. Monarch butterflies are also an Ontario protected species at risk and a North American icon, the only butterfly in the world that migrates for long distances. Its numbers keep declining drastically due to insecticide use, habitat loss and, and the erratic weather like hurricanes that they probably encountered on migration to Mexico this last fall. The migrating generation of monarch butterflies is just in the ager caterpillar stage when you want staff to cut them down on their milkweed host and food source plants. So mowing kills them and any other animals caught in the mower's blades. The grasslands you're asking to be mowed are food sources for many other species of bird, butterfly and other pollinators that need the storage energy reserves that the plants provide to be able to survive migrations of thousands of kilometers or six months of Canadian winter in colder temperatures. There are many smart Barry citizens willing to volunteer to work with staff and council to keep the waterfront a wonderful place to visit and help rather than hinder the species we share this planet with. So please change the minimum two acres grass cut area to a maximum 0.6 area, acres, or take out the maximum number of acres and let us work with staff to come up with solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, you got it right on. Look at that. That doesn't happen very often. Any questions for members of council? I'm not seeing any, so thank you for your deputation. I'm now going to ask Chuck Rattan to come up on behalf of Barry Arts Alliance.
Good evening, Mayor Nuttall and councillors and members of the public. This letter was originally prepared in acknowledgement of General Committee's decision, and the emergency deputation was filed to ensure that if there were issues concerning the Performing Arts Centre, that we had an opportunity to respond. So I'll read the letter. It's dated October 18th. It was prepared with the assistance of Gary Bell of Lyrica Choir. You may know him in other respects. It reads, "Dear Mayor Nuttall, the Barry Arts Alliance thanks you and all of council for adopting the motion October 9 to proceed with Hariri Pontorini Architects to complete a schematic design for a new performing arts centre at the Barry waterfront. This facility will well serve the arts and culture community of Barry and area. Many members of the 22 Barry Arts Alliance organisations listed below were present to hear the positive remarks from many councillors in support of this major arts and culture decision. We were pleased to see the thoughtful detail of the motion and its clarity of intent to build a waterfront performing arts facility with two performance spaces, required site due diligence and a dedicated capital projects manager. We look forward to working with city council and staff and HPA, that's the architects, to produce a well-conceived schematic design and implementation plan for General Committee's consideration and, of course, now, council's consideration. Please let us know how best we can work together to get this important job done." And I say once again, thank you for your support and foresight.
Thank you for your presentation. I will interpret that as the just in case, get our last, please do this in. I don't think, from what I'm hearing, I don't think that you're going to go home with a sad face. I think you're going to go home happy this evening. Okay, so that brings our deputations to a, an end. We're going to move past tax applications and communications into committee reports. Deputy Mayor Thompson, I believe you have the motions. Deputy Mayor Thompson, I believe you have the motions.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Corser. That's section A of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Corser. The section A of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated to be received. This is 24G211, report of the Community Safety Committee dated September 25th, and 24G212, report of the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee dated October 2nd, 2024. Are there any questions and comments with regards to section A? Seeing none. All those in favour? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Corser. That's section B of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated be adopted.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Thompson. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Corser. The section B of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated be adopted. This is 24G213, budget expenditure approval to hire consultant. 24G214, additional membership. 24G215, sports tourism strategy. 24G216, parks, horticulture and forestry service level review. 24G217, parking on Coronation Parkway and Prince William Way in Ward 10. 24G218, pedestrian crossing analysis Blake Street at Huron Street and Rodney Street, Ward 1. 24G219, business plan status as of June 30th, 2024. 24G20, Berry Performing Arts and Event Centre. 24G221, property acquisition Whiskey Creek Culvert and Channel Improvements, the Boulevard to Brennan Avenue in Ward 8. And before I turn to the deputy mayor, there's an amendment, I believe. Just, the Berry Performing Arts Centre, Arts and Event Centre motion is not the one that I think you're here to support. It's the old report, so I just want to make sure that we're not voting on that right now, folks. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I have an amendment. Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Nuttall. That motion 24G13, sorry, 113 of section E of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, concerning the budget expenditures above, approved to hire consultant to amend to be replaced, paragraph one with the following. Who? My apologies. It's no longer seconded by you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Corser. That motion 24G213 of section B of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, concerning budget expenditure, approved to hire consultant be separated and reintroduced as section E. And I can speak to that.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Corser. The motion 24G213 of section B of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, concerning budget expenditure approval to hire consultant be separated and reintroduced as section E. This is just a housekeeping matter, that we need to separate this item out, so I'll call the vote. All those in favour? It's approved. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Corser. That section C.
Sorry, before we do that, sorry. We need to vote on section B as amended. Any comments or questions with regards to section B? Seeing none. All those in favour? It carries.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Corser. That section C of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Corser. The section C of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. This is 24G222, committee appointment, Communities in Bloom Committee. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favour? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Corser. That's section D of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Corser. The section D of the General Committee Report dated October 9th, 2024, now circulated to be adopted. 24G223, waterfront public consultation feedback. Any questions or comments from members of council with regards to the motion that we adopted at General Committee last week? Councillor Kangal.
Yes, thank you. I would like to make an amendment, and I've got that in writing for the clerk, specific to paragraph four. Yeah, okay. Currently, paragraph four is specific to the section on the conversation we had on the South Shore Community Centre and the acreage of grass cut area to allow for overflow parking. Through the conversation, I just wanted to make sure that it would be caught in scope, that we would get back recommendations, including designation considerations. So I have an amendment as follows, and it's only to the very end of paragraph four, that the Development Services staff prepare a design concept to locate a passive park east of the General John Hayter South Shore Community Centre to include a minimum of two acres of grass cut area to allow for overflow parking for historical events that will occur on the property and accessible walkways through the naturalised area and report back to General Committee with the concept and costing, including designation considerations. And that is moved by myself and seconded by councillor Corser.
It's moved by councillor Kangal and seconded by councillor Corser. For amend language to add at the end with the concept and costing, including designation considerations. You were a doctor in a past life. I'm now going to put that on the floor. Are there any questions or comments with regards to this motion? I'm seeing none. Just before we do, like.
Do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah, could you? I don't know what designation considerations are.
So in the conversation that I heard was whether or not parking was controlled, whether or not we had specific permits, whether or not it fell under special events. And then I heard that there were, there were aspects where, while it's designated open right now, that if we wanted to change that, that designations would need to actually occur through council direction to delineate the area that's specific to the meadow versus this, the rest of the area that I think is the area we're aiming at for mowing. So I would like staff to come back with clarity about, how would they recommend? We appreciate the space, knowing that it's zoned open, but we have interest from the public around the mowed area and the green space versus the meadow. So I'd like to understand how we would look at zoning in different ways. So some people, and through the consultation, have said designated an EP for environmentally protected, or would we need different designations if we wanted to do different uses? So would love to understand, while the current designation is open, are there other considerations that might align to the feedback we're getting from the public, knowing that some of those areas are sensitive?
So just, just to confirm, what you're looking for is a concept asking and costing, concept and costing, to look at potential re-zonings of the land?
Yeah, so nothing specific outside of what's being asked for, the concept coming back, as well as the costing to come back. In addition to that, I'd like a recommendation or information on designation considerations for how we treat that space, if we would ever consider changing it from open designation.
So to go from open space, I'm going to go to Ms. Banfield. To go from open space to something else, my understanding is it's a rezoning, is that correct?
Mayor Nuttall, you're correct.
So, so when we're talking about designation consideration, is, like, we have to be very clear, like, there's a set of laws that define what we can do and can't do, and then we have our own bylaws that interpret those and so on and so forth. So if the request is to rezone the land, then we should probably use that language.
So through you, Mayor Nuttall, to yourself and/or to Ms. Banfield, whatever language is most appropriate, I think it's around making sure that what comes back from staff's scope with that report to General Committee can give us some insight into how we may want to appreciate that green space in different ways, and what would that look like around different zoning parameters or permissions?
Okay, so I'm just going to ask somebody. We can't friendly here, can we? No, no friends at council. Just give me a moment here, yeah.
So I'd like to withdraw that amendment and table another one?
Okay, there's been a request to withdraw, which I think we're all okay with, and we're going to move on to another amendment here.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I'd like to table an amendment, still to paragraph four, 24G-223, and it is only to add language at the very end of paragraph four, and I believe through the conversation you understand my intention, and that is that the concept and costing include other zoning considerations, and that's supported by councillor Corser as a second.
Can you email it to us, please?
Councillor, just in the, I understand your request, and we want to have these things a lot earlier than 8:20, but I just want to keep the meeting moving, if that's okay. So I'm just going to read it out, and I'll, and I'll read it slowly, because I get to read it and you don't have it in front of you. So it's to amend language to add at the end with the concept and costing, including other zoning designations. Those other zoning designations would be at Allendale Station Park. Councillor.
Sorry, just one question through you. So understanding that we are in the middle of a public zoning bylaw consultation outside of this, I, I'm just sort of confused now. We're starting another process and report, and we're already doing that. November 21st, there's a public consultation taking place for bylaw changes in, for draft three, because the October one was cancelled when the power outage had happened, so I just, I, and maybe I'll wait to the vote to say, I'm not going to be supportive of this, because I, I get really nervous taking zoning outside of the process that's currently underway. I think it undermines that process, so I'd like to continue on with that and, and provide feedback, invite people to come to the public consultation that's on November 21st, and make the decisions there. So I don't know if that was a question or comment, but.
It was, it was going to start as a question, but it was a good comment, councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Through you to staff and probably Ms. Banfield would be the best, because I was thinking the same thing, that's why I was trying to put my hand up a little earlier. It seems very duplicative of the process that you and your staff already have on the go with the, the zoning bylaw. I would just like, invite your comments in regards to, do you also believe that this is a duplicative motion of something that's already into draft three? And unfortunately, as mentioned, we couldn't have the public meeting when we were supposed to due to a power outage.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Harvey. So just a correction, sorry, the public meeting's November 20, oh, sorry, November 14th, not the 21st, November 14th. And I have spoken with many of the people actually that are in the audience today about them coming and speaking about the zoning piece to this puzzle, because there are a whole bunch of moving pieces, and the zoning piece, I do expect that we'll hear more from the community on the 14th. At the end of the day, if the motion goes through, we most likely would say, we heard about this at the public meeting, and so there probably wouldn't be a, a site-specific recommended change. Staff would most likely recommend that council follows through with the comprehensive zoning bylaw, just given where we are in the process.
Great, thank you. And I, I'm in the same boat. I struggle to support this. Staff are already well on their way in, in the comprehensive zoning bylaw, and anybody that wants to have input on regards to any properties in the city has their opportunity moving forward to separate this one, just doesn't make any sense.
I have councillor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Ms. Banfield, the, the language around, like, looking at the different resources essentially, cost timing that it would take to do this, we, the city, the municipality of the city of Berry, we own this land right now, correct? Like, right now it's our land, obviously. So in the past, when we've rezoned land that we owned for various reasons, usually it's the upzone it for, to make it into productive uses, not saying passive uses aren't productive, but you know what I mean. We, we have, we have a meeting, we follow the planning process. It's not that we have a different process than the public, but when we are both, the applicant and the, and the deciding factor in line with the Planning Act and other related rules, it just follows that process. So beyond booking the meeting and having staff time and all that, a lot of the costs, while not zero, are really in-house, and it's more about checking the checkmarks, the right, right time. Is that a fair representation, or would you like to add some colour or clarity to that?
Mayor, through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Morales. So there is no way to change a zoning on a property without following the Planning Act process, regardless of who the owner is.
Okay, perfect. So I, I'm not going to support this either. I, I don't mind in the past, I, Mayor Nuttall, I've been guilty of it, at council meetings or general committee meetings on, like, adding, like, capital projects, or, you know, timing, something opens up where there's opportunities to enhance a, a public space or a partnership with a festival, for example. So I, I want to say right away, I'm, I'm in this glass house here, so that's not a concern. The only thing about this is saying, building on what my colleague said, this is a zoning ask now. So it's kind of like a last-minute earmark at the council step on a zoning ask, fresh from a very emotional interaction, personally speaking, not speaking for everyone, that's not how I do things. So I, I would, I was going to wait it till the amendment fails or not to say the general comments, but I'll intertwine this a little bit. I have concerns about being over-prescriptive. I understand some people don't want cars to go there, I get it. You want to make it as passive as possible. I get it. Like, I, some people have been direct, some people are trying to go like, well, and, and I love the comments about, like, supporting active transportation or shuttles, and I really hope those people make comments about the zoning bylaw. Maybe you want less parking requirements with infill projects, because those two things are kind of in line. You can't want one, you can't want one and not the other, because less parking requirements will increase investment in public transportation. So my point being, there's a zoning process that's taking part. I know that right now that has been mostly occupied by people dealing with other types of concerns, but that's a place for this. So last minute on an earmark, just because it's zoning. I don't want to be a, a personal hypocrite, because I've done it on capital asks when they're timely, but on zoning, I think it's a, 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 a good, good intent, councillor Kangal, and I just won't be supporting it, but we'll see how much engagement we get at the future November meeting.
Councillor Reba.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to support this amendment, because it's in the context of staff taking a look at, should we change the zoning and bring it back as part of a report? It's not actually doing the zoning, it's taking a look at it and seeing what we should, what is the best approach. I think that's reasonable, and staff are going to do a design, work with a number of people, and I think one of the things that they, they can reasonably do is to say, should we rezone it, and if we should rezone it, what should we rezone it to? Or maybe we shouldn't. And then, after that, the legal process actually happens, and it could happen in conjunction with our zoning bylaw that we've got, we're working on now, or it could go by itself. But I think it makes sense to ask staff what our options are at this point.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Councillor Harris.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Nuttall. Yeah, I appreciate certainly where we've landed from where this initiative began many months ago, so I do appreciate that. And again, knowing we have a fulsome process for zoning, I, you know, I'd understood that was a place where this would land, and I do appreciate and recognise, also in Mr. Green's report, he did make a recommendation on zoning, but I'm just not sure again, as, you know, I think we want to provide some certainty for people. I think what's been, you know, the challenge for me, and I know that Lake Shore is an asset that everybody has ownership for, whatever, whatever ward you live in, recognising that it's in Ward 8, this particular part of the Lake Shore that's under, under consideration tonight, but I just, certainly, you know, and I, and I had correspondence, my first response back to the residents on this item was, you know, you know, we're, staff are preparing a design concept. We don't have that design concept yet, we don't have the details, and I appreciate people wanting details, and people having concern about parking and how much parking, and traditionally, how much parking have we needed to host really important events for the arts community and Kepin Fest and the business community in the case of the, the airshow. So, you know, we want to get this right, and I just appreciate the added element of zoning onto this, but I do appreciate that we have a zoning meeting on the 14th to really go through this and where that would be an opportunity. So maybe just. where that would be an opportunity. So, maybe just through you, Mayor Nettle, to Ms. Banfield, is, and I think you've already answered this, apologies just for clarity again, would this be redundant and possibly unnecessary if, in the zoning process, that recommendation was made prior than whenever this report comes? That, that would already be covered? Does that, that potential exist?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counsel Harris. The, this piece of property will be dealt with through the comprehensive zoning bylaw, absolutely.
And, and if, and may I follow up, Mayor Nettle? If we, if we let that process evolve in its natural rhythm, would that then help inform the proposed, the design concept that staff will be presenting at a later date?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris. Most likely, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, with that, I appreciate the motion, but I would, in respect of the process, the opportunity to provide that clarity, that we have that opportunity to provide that clarity with the zoning at that point. Now, maybe one follow-up question. As it relates to the zoning, could we create limitations by, by what zoning we chose, which might be, create challenges for the design concept?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris. Staff have, as I said, have heard from some residents, and what I've kind of focused their comments on is trying to articulate what they're actually asking for, and have kind of said to them, just ask, ask for what you want and let staff kind of do that, that backend of how we do it, because there are different ways to do that. So today, I don't have the best way to say to council to do that, but we've just kind of said, try to articulate what you want, and then staff can, can take it away to present back to council to see if, if that vision aligns with what council wants.
Okay. Mayor Nettle, thank you. Maybe one further question. And staff would have received and seen the same recommendation that this newly formed task force has provided as their vision for this space. So that, that's been received by staff. Staff have that?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counsel Harris. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's an interesting spot. I, I sit here thinking that we want to create some certainty, but it's early, and we haven't allowed ourselves the full breadth of, you know, consideration for what this design concept will be. So I don't want to do anything that, that unfortunately limits what could be, and then, then be end up in a position where we're trying to undo something that we did, because in the moment, we wanted to, you know, provide some, you know, satisfaction for people who are really concerned about this space, and understandably so, and with all good intentions. So, yeah, I, I'll wait for your comments, Mayor Nettle, but I'm a little bit mixed in between on this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of council? Okay. I actually think there's a number of things that are being conflated here, in the sense that there is the request for two acres, I, I put Mr. Green's report somewhere, but there's a report for two acres, a request for two acres of a natural area set aside for youth, nothing formal, nothing fancy, just cleared so people can play. That's one thing that's being talked about. The other thing that's being talked about is parking for Kempin Fest. And the other thing that's being talked about is, how do we keep the largest, most environmentally protected area that we possibly can, and that's being communicated by four deputants tonight, I think there's a few more people here as well. And I think that we need to recognize that what we're trying to achieve has parameters. I'm not sure the parameter of a redesignation or a rezoning is the answer. I'll give you an example. So I went to a gala in the woods. Three weeks ago, I picked up MP Shipley, and we went out there, and we had a beautiful dinner in the middle of the woods, and we parked our car, or my car, in a parking lot in the middle of the woods, on a piece of property that's zoned, protected, right? The entire forest there has been protected. I don't think that council determining, and I, so this is where I agree with some of what's been brought forward, determining on, you know, where parking should and shouldn't take place is probably the best way to move forward, nor do I think that putting an environmentally protected zoning on it will stop a car from being there. Neither do I think that there is a common understanding of what that two acres has been, whether it's from the deputants or members of council. So, what I do know is that we've asked staff to report back, and I think that when their report comes back, I would doubt it's going to come back prior to the zoning bylaw coming into effect. Maybe? Maybe, maybe not. Could.
Mayor, Mayor Nettle, yeah, it could. Who knows? We're going to get through, planning is really like date-oriented, so we're going to get through at November 14th and see where we go with the zoning bylaw. At the same token, we'll take a look at, at the, the amount of work involved in, in these recommendations, and so we'll, we'll schedule that, and we'll make sure that, that you're aware of the timing.
Thank you. In any event, on whether it's before or after, what we're actually saying is, like, what do we want it to be used for, right? And that's just, that's going to inform what happens on zoning, if there's anything that happens on zoning. But I think it's a little premature to go down the zoning road, and I, and I do think that we need to properly articulate to the public that what's being asked, what the amendment was last week, did ask for a two-acre portion to be set aside for a park, right, and then said also to be used for historical events for parking. And I think Kempin Fest is, what, 50 years old or something like that? I think we recently, Stephanie, yes? I'm getting a nod. I'm guessing that means there was parking somewhere along here for that time period, or maybe it didn't actually start occurring here until we were ceded the lands by CN. But in any event, we can look at what the proposal was from CN, what the council of the day adopted, and we can look at what's on title, and I'm sure we can all agree that Kempin Fest literally hits cultural events, like it's literally on the deed. So I'm struggling on looking at a rezoning without Kempin Fest being here to tell us what they need, without the folks from Berry Rotary telling us what they need, because they're involved here as well, and then weighing all of those things alongside the requests that are coming from members of the public this evening, and then going forth with a plan. So, all of that to say, I think we, Ms. Banfield has been patiently listening to, to all of us, public and council. I think that you understand what everybody's trying to achieve. Maybe there's competing interests, maybe there's not, right? But if you could, when you come back with that report, really articulate the different things, because there's a big difference between a two-acre playpark and a six-acre place where people are looking to park, right? And there's a, there's a big difference between a meadow and a cut area, right? So, we need to clearly articulate that, what the recommendation is as it comes back. And I would ask, on top of the request that's been, been put here, which I'm, I'm not going to support the amendment, but I, but I do want that information back. On top of that, I would also like, if we're going to see a reduction in the area that's allowed for parking, something from a schlichter, as well as the folks over in the, the culture, arts and culture area, that tells us what the plan is for parking, if not here. Because what I heard, what, and I, other members of council can tell me I'm wrong, but what I heard from folks on the sports field is, they don't want the busyness around them over in Minette's Point. What I heard was, we don't want a whole bunch of more people coming into our neighborhood. It's already, we've got Minette's Point, we, we're already overrun with vehicles parking. It's too much. And if we're going to say you can't park here, they're going to park somewhere. So, is it over on Cumberland? Is it on going up Bayview? Is it going into Minette's Point area? Those are the two communities that are closest to this place, and those are the two communities that are closest to Kempin Fest. And so, I would like to understand if we're going to propose a change in that report, that we include what, what that looks like and what it means to, to Kempin Fest. In any event, I will call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? There's three. All those opposed? There's seven. On the main motion, Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Just on the main motion, I wanted to say to the arts community, and I know I sat on the task force with a few of them, I see in the audience, and, you know, we didn't always agree. And, you know, they, they, they went on tours, and they seen lots of different theaters, and, you know, they, they extracted the greatness of every theater they went to and put it into the, the wishes of the Berry Theater. And, you know, and because I knew I would have to come back here, and, you know, and try to convince six other people to go along, or five other people, as the majority of council, it, it was going to be difficult because of the price tag, and, you know, we've seen in the first report and stuff like that. And I, and I remember one of the members saying to me, you know, this is the task force, this is our, you know, shoot for the moon, and we'll get somewhere that can work. And that's exactly what's happened. And, you know, and I really appreciated that aspect. Like, I was there as a task force member, you know, to wear a different hat, but they understood too that I would have to come here, and, you know, I probably gained some favoritism from them when I made the comment, you know, we build rec centers for athletes, and we don't build nothing for our theater groups, and now we are. This is something that's been going on and kicked around since the Fisher Auditorium, and, you know, not too much investment in the Georgian Theater. But I look at all the aspects here, and I think of, the original motion starts with the Sea Cadets moving to a parade ground and a facility safer for them. I think of all the deputations we had on that night from the sports teams that were in favor of a multi-use sports field, you know, on the waterfront. And then I think of the theater. They, you know, they, they had a much larger theater on Central. And I, and I think about it, you know, the, the sports teams moved, the Sea Cadets reduced, the theater a little bit smaller, but a real achievable path forward. And I think, you know, we've all made kind of concessions or, you know, sacrifices for the greater good of the city. And I just wish that the outcome of this is, you know, from good consultation and, and a process, you know, that was started by Mayor Nettle to reach out to Marshall Green to start this. But I think we need to look at everybody compromised for the greater good of the city. Like, we started with something, you know, and Counselor Jim Harris made the comment about, we were going to build a field, but it was going to be subpar for, for what we needed. And this process has actually allowed us to, you know, possibly build a really great facility that we can be proud of. Having the theater on the waterfront, I think, gives great exposure to the arts, and will drive up the revenues and the participation in it by the location. So, it's, I, I want to thank everybody, because I know lots of councilors, you know, I remember Counselor Hamilton and I, we went to the Bears Den. We sat there, and we, we stood at Wiki's with these great involved people, and they were, you know, aggressive, but because they, they care about their neighborhood, and they're passionate about it. But we did it, and, you know, to get a good outcome. So, I'll definitely be supporting this, but I look around, and I, I just want to say thank you, because everybody being here, you know, some people aren't as happy as they could be. Some people compromised more than, you know, they probably wanted to, but I believe that this whole process, and everybody here, you know, has got us to a good place, and, and I think it's a bright future that, that we've created for Berry. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments, questions? Counsel Kungel.
You probably know what I'm going to talk about. So, I do thank everyone for all the effort and really good dialogue, based on those that have engaged members of council directly or in different forms, but also I think some of the work that the public may not see, which is good conversations we're having with staff and between each other on, on where to get to here. I guess I'll just note a couple of pieces. And so, I mean, the piece on the waterfront is, we've heard through the public consultation, a revisiting of things from the past, and so fear and mistrust tied to that, too. So I think when we talk about the concept, that comes back, and part of my intention, and I think, you know, I'm fine with where we got to around people feeling that the zoning bylaw is a process. It's not to, it's not to duplicate that process, but if it does come back, I think it, and I will be asking questions of staff for this, and sometimes it's that tricky part of, if you don't ask for it, it's not caught in the direction to staff. But it really, for me, is about being mindful about, do we as council fully appreciate all the different, be it zonings or designations, around this type of sensitive area, and some of the mixed uses we're talking about. So if it doesn't come back with the concept, and that comes back to general committee before the zoning conversation, I think those are important things for us to appreciate, which is, I'll say it, you know, and part of the conversations have been, an environmentally protected area doesn't necessarily mean it meets the expectations of the public about what you can and can't do on an EP, and with the majority will of a council of the day, that can very quickly change. And so I think overall, if we're talking about a concept for various uses, it will be important, I believe, for this council to understand, what does it really mean, no matter how it's zoned, about what we're permitting and/or how we safeguard that space, maybe through things in addition to zoning. So what does a trust look like? So sometimes we talk broadly about options for the space, but we might not really understand what does it mean to do that. So I think there's great awareness that maybe there's something more we really need to be engaging, examining on for particular aspects of this space that might be broader than EP. So I look forward to those conversations, and won't belabor it, but do support the motion as it's tabled.
Counsel Reba.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the first thing I want to do is invite our arts community back here at every council meeting, because the singing of "O Canada" was much better than what we normally have. So please come back every time, every meeting. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this motion, because I think it starts us off in a direction. We're going to get a lot of reports back, and we'll be able to look at each piece in more detail. But I, I think that we've got a waterfront plan here that is starting to move in the right direction, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how all these pieces fit together.
Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. And I agree with the comments made by those who've already spoken, and I do remember the task force, and when Mr. Rattan came on the committee, was, not the beginning, it was kind of midway, but you were a force on the task force the moment you arrived and became a leader, so thank you, and, and I echo the comments from Deputy Mayor Thompson. We were like, okay, what's going to be able to get around the council table? And, and I really appreciate the willingness of the arts community to work in a really collaborative way to make sure that we have a performing arts center, not just a plan for one. And I'm not quite sure how Deputy Thompson, I became the, the card-carrying members for the council with the arts community, but, but it's been a pleasure. And, you know, we started Theater Reserve, you know, five years ago, because we wanted to be... to be planful. We have a plan. We not just have a dream about a center, we have a plan, we're putting money aside for it. So, you know, we do have some money and we do have a commitment and I look forward to this being approved. And I also want to say, and it was noted as well by Deputy Mayor Thompson, this, I know, whole discussion came about, you know, with the Sea Cadets and the effort to really longstanding, many year effort to move them to a better location, to to do what they do for youth in our community and also to do it more safely. And it then brought with it the, for for many residents, the unpleasant possibility of a multipurpose turf field, which we don't have in our city complement of rec facilities to offer. And that came with the concern and and I really appreciate the residents who spoke tonight with with concern because we don't have the certainty yet about what that new plan for South Shore is going to be. And I and I appreciate that that certainty will create a lot more comfort. And for my chair, and I remember when the vote was nine two in favor of the field, having the belief that time and more information would possibly lead us to a different outcome. And here we are with a different outcome and much to the the effort of Mayor Nettle and obviously engaging Mr. Green and then our community in what could be and many exciting new opportunities have arisen since that very first motion about Sea Cadets and Fields. So but I also want to focus on the positive. Everybody is left with a positive and I don't want to make any false narrative, but if I look at the task force report that was provided, and I appreciate the task force report, 20 acres. And if if we use the measure that was cut this year at three acres, that's an if, we haven't got the the projected plan from our staff, that's 85% of that area that will be dedicated to that naturalization, that oak savanna and a tall grass area. So I I think, you know, I can see that as a very positive outcome, knowing that as a task force chair for the Performing Arts Center, we didn't get 85% of the seats that we had 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 to ask for, right, Mr. Rattan, we're close, but not 85%. But so I think that in this motion, from the energy when it was first introduced, the energy when we had the discussions and Ms. Banfield's team did a fabulous job of of providing engagement for our community at the South Shore, there's a lot of excitement about everything on this motion and I hope that all of the things on this will come to fruition. But for those who are concerned about the details of the South Shore, we look forward to the plan that will be presented by staff and the opportunity to really dig into that and see what that becomes. And and again, staff have received and have seen the plan and all the work that's been put into thoughtfully considering what could be in that space. So thank you for that and I will support the motion and look forward to all that will come from this effort. So thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'll play off on some of the words Deputy Mayor Thompson said when he said, like, you know, and he was speaking for himself, that he he doesn't always agree when they have the discussions. I feel pretty similar, like, a lot of you attending here, like, we don't always agree and I probably make some of your, some individuals blood boil with my perspectives, but there's something that I know is the case. You usually always know where I stand. I try not to be, even accidentally, I try not to be, you know, one way or another. I do change my mind, but you kind of go like, okay, well, he he believes what he believes. And one of the things around that is I don't I don't want to give false hope. And whether it's this issue or any other issues, you know, just as much as maybe on this issue in the past historically with the arts, because I know this is kind of a, there's lots of components to this motion, you maybe it's been like, I completely disagree. There's people out there that also go like, oh, my God, like, they come up to me, the grocery store go like, oh, you said it like it was on on this issue or another, but I try not to do the false hope. So I'll be supporting this motion as as written right now. And on the logic of not giving false hope, you know what, if we get to a situation where a councillor, because it has to be someone around the table, when we get to the final zoning bylaw, like ready, a general committee, then council, then approved, likely in January, if a councillor wants to move an amendment to zoning bylaw on this specific topic for this specific location, then so be it. And again, in the, like, to be blunt, as I always am, and not to give false hope, I probably won't support it. I'm not going to be coy about that, but I'll go into the meeting with an open mind. There's been times in the past, I don't know how many people I've watched historically, even on the Brink's in different situations, I've I've I definitely have been convinced and swayed. But I want, obviously, I personally want to follow that process, let the votes fall where they may. This whole thing of like, let's maybe ask staff to look into maybe exploring the possibility of, like, that's that's just false hope. You guys could be watching the the World Series right now, you could be spending time with your families. Now, to the reasons why I like this motion, so I'm speaking to the motion, why I like it, it is without over prescription of the limitation of can cars go there or can they not? Besides the fact that, Mayor Nettle, you make great points about like, even in in somewhat EP-protected land in your experience, like Cars Still Park, like, what are you going to do? A city frozen in time is a city that gets left behind. I just came up with that on the spot while people were speaking and I was inspired by what they're saying. And I said this months ago, so for those that maybe weren't watching that meeting, you know, as a as a student of 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 my city's history, I've seen the pictures, I wasn't around, but I can appreciate it. Barry used to be a bunch of tanneries and a rail, a rail line and lots of really good industrious uses, but lots of really polluting. And I'm not judging the people of that time by the lens of today, but what it really comes down to is cities evolve, cities change. Now, there's a delicate balance between protecting the things that matter, the jewels, the 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 uniqueness, that doesn't just mean change for the sake of change is good, but being, in my opinion, being over prescriptive and limiting what could be is a detriment to the evolution of our waterfront. I believe the process works now. We were going down a different direction, Mayor Nettle, in 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 the spring, early summer, and look where we are now. And this doesn't mean that every single time we need people to come here and and, you know, bring common sense to us, but please do. We do, we do, we do appreciate it. But there is a process, the system works, the checks and balances work, and doing over prescription with possibility of open space or EP, those are just, in my opinion, again, over prescriptive. Can EP be undone? Yes, it can, but like realistically, like, find me, find me a council that on the run without provincial direction overrode EP. So I like where we are. And the plan for parking, I think that's a really good one. And I'm going to, a lot of individuals that mentioned the parking, I don't know you personally, but I'm I'm glad you made the points about more sustainable, like, access to getting to Kempin Fest, et cetera. Yeah, we need to provide different modes of transportation. It's not a war on cars, it's just the ability to give people different choices. And so as part of staff, I know there was no amendment to investigate the possible ripple effects of parking redistribution. There might be exploration about, like, parking facilities, not on the waterfront, but being built, there's a couple of plazas on abutting kind of a young and et cetera. Maybe they might step up and say, hey, we've been thinking about doing a parcade or something. So there's lots of possibilities that can evolve. So I'm glad that we're having a worthwhile discussion for that. So to conclude, I'll be supporting the motion and I thank people for coming here. And again, it's, you you might not always agree with individual members of council or us as a collective, but I think this process is 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 pretty important.
Thank you, Counselor Morales. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor, you have spoken once, as a clarification.
Actually, yeah, it's just a point of clarity and just to keep everything above board, if you don't mind. And this is through you to the clerk. I was just reading here and stuff and I have heard a lot about the task force and stuff. Just to to make sure everything's done in in a cadence with our new lobby registry. Can you maybe reach out to these groups so they register? Because I've noticed, like, that there hasn't been any registry since the 15th, just so it stays all, because they belong to organizations and and it wouldn't be for tonight because this is a public meeting, but the stuff they did leading up to this, reaching out to members of council and stuff with, can you, can we make sure that happens, please?
Three, Mayor Nettle, to Deputy Mayor Thompson, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other comments or clarifications or questions from members of council? Okay, folks, we have got here and we have got, I think, a very good plan that's going to support getting a performing arts center built, which is something that I didn't believe that we had two years ago due to cost. I think we've got a better location for you. It's not as big, as large, doesn't have as many performance spaces, but I think it's something that we can actually bite into and get done. And I really do look forward to getting those provincial and federal dollars to help support this as well. So we'll need you all to be writing those letters and putting that pressure on going forward. Performing arts to the potential stadium, to what we see at the park and even the conversation tonight, the cadets, like, there's a lot. The potential for the Baycats to move downtown is something that's still being pursued and looked at. It is a lot of really good things. So I think that, number one, we should be proud of our community to actually come behind a a plan and a vision. Number two, we should be thankful to Marshall, as I said a couple of weeks ago, for all the time and effort that he put in to help us along as a city. And number three, I just want to say, you know, it's easy to gloat when you get a victory, it's really difficult to look the lights and go, hey, we need to slow down, take into consideration everything we're hearing, and turn around to go in a different direction. And so I think that members of council also deserve a a congratulations and 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 a thank you and and thank you for being part of such a a team that's willing to to dig in and and turn when needed. So with that, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous and carries. Deputy Mayor. Announcements are on the table. Counselor Kangol, I know there's an exciting announcement.
There is. I'm going to take a couple of minutes, if I can ask for your grace on that, Mayor Nettle, to celebrate a huge success that we experienced as a city of Barry over the weekend. I know I'll mention how we'll make time to do some proper recognition of staff, but I did want to formally thank Mayor Brown, his staff, and all the lovely businesses and members of the community of Charlottetown Prince Edward Island, who hosted many municipalities across Canada, but also internationally, over the weekend for the 30th anniversary of Commies and Bloom. And we came back, I had the privilege of being with members of staff, Mona Boyd, our horticulture foreperson, who's really been leading in this space. And I think if any member of the public's been part of our Commies and Bloom Committee, she's been an everlasting force to be reckoned with around putting us on the map over the past 25 years we've participated in this competition. So this weekend, we received our results of the international competition in July, some of you may recall, and staff did a lot of work to show up for us at the social center and showcase some of the work that they're doing across departments. And we had judges from Belgium and Hungary with us. And on their review of us, we competed internationally this year. We received a rating of five blooms, gold, which is a special mention as well for our waterfront strategic plan. And we were also called to the stage to receive an outstanding achievement award for green cities. So both very, I would say coveted awards. Very graciously, we accepted them. It was a surprise. I think we thought we might have been punching above our weight in this competition, but really, if you have the opportunity to go through the handout that we've provided to all members of council, to see the exceptional work that sometimes isn't spotlighted as as much as you might be aware of. So we are excited to share information soon about a gathering we will hold on November the 20th to really put a spotlight. I think it's well over 100 different staff at least that have touched this project over the years. But in particular, I wanted to share that sometimes the public thinks that Commies and Bloom is about flowers. And so it is much broader than that and it really is looking at evaluating us on departments around industry, business, private sector, volunteer efforts. And it's on criteria regarding not only our community appearance, but environmental action, heritage, conservation, tree management, landscape, plant and floral displays. So I want to recognize senior staff and your respective teams. And I know Kevin Rankin is here today and I know Mona's part of your team, so much celebration, I'm hoping. So she brought both awards back, we barely fit them in suitcases, so we're hopefully going to be showcasing that to the public on the 20th and talking a bit about some of the highlights that were there. But I did want to close this announcement off by sharing a response from our judges about Barry. Barry's waterfront is a crown jewel of the city and preserving the public spaces along the shoreline is a high priority. The waterfront strategic plan includes revitalization projects, such as a floral installation at Military Heritage Park, recommendations for 21 waterfront parks around Kempinfield Bay and the planting of over 1,000 new trees along the 10-kilometer stretch, and in addition, introducing an improved ecological offsetting policy aimed at planting more trees within the city limits. And while it's always a dangerous thing to thank some staff more than others, I also wanted to recognize that the waterfront strategic plan was a very significant document and considering we've been talking about that tonight and where we've gotten to in public consultation, recognition of Michelle's team on that, and I think in particular, Mr. Bradley. So thank you and I'm hoping people can earmark November the 20th for more information about how we can recognize staff and their efforts.
Thank you, Counselor Kangol, and thank you for the work that you've put into it because you put a lot of work into the committee, you put a lot of work into the work that's done by the committee, and you put a lot of time and effort into working with our our public servants to deliver that. And so, you know, it's it's, yes, it's all of them, but it's also you as well. And 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 really want to say thank you on behalf of the city for that. Also, is it a word cloud where you look at how many times you say a word?
Yeah.
Yep, that's what it's called? Like, the over-under on ecological offsetting be said so many times around this table that we started? It's pretty wild. But it shows you, it's getting recognized and we we made a change and it's sounds like it's it's going in the right direction.
Mayor Nettle, it's better than my word cloud, which is I'll be short or I'll be brief.
So true. No one's going to say that's wrong, okay? Okay, who else has announcements? Okay, well, then I'll go into the next announcement. So the city has been recognized for our beauty and our foresight, as Counselor Kangol has just outlined, but there's actually, like, it's, we should be blushing. We were announced as, and this is a very important one as well, we're recognized with the 2024 Canada's Safest Employer Award. And that's with the Safe Start Award for Canada's safest employee employer for young workers. So to all of our executive management team, our senior leadership team, our human resources department, all of you who have created that culture, not in a day, not in a year, probably a decade, maybe longer than that, right, Don? I want to say thank you and that's something that we should be incredibly proud of as a city. The other item that we received very good news on, that's a rating system, is that we've received a double A plus credit rating for another year. Not only is it being solidified as stable, but it's been moved to positive. And that hopefully will eventually pave the way for triple A rating for the city of Barry. And the positivity around this is, you know what, this is good for debt in terms of the cost of debt, the carrying cost of debt, but it's also good in terms of it sends a clear signal to the community that things are well in hand. And that was, you know, we would love to say thank you to Craig, he's no longer with us, but Craig, thank you. And also, also, again, all of our our team, our executive management team all the way down, and to you, council, who's taken the advice of our our experts. And this trajectory of positive outcomes when it comes to our rating continues. And I think that's something that we should be incredibly proud of alongside the other items that we've we've been recognized with. Local Government Week is October 21st to 26th. Municipalities are the level of government that are closest to residents for services that are used daily, including transportation, roads, economic development, planning, bylaw enforcement, community centers, fire services, water, sewage, parks, building and more. Local government
Local Government Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of local government professionals. So I'd like to recognize and thank again all of our public servants for providing exceptional service to the city of Berry and our residents. The city of Berry is updating its multi-year accessibility plan and age-friendly community plan and is seeking input from the public to help shape these updates. The community can participate by completing a seniors and accessibility survey. The survey deadline is November the 1st, 2024. For further information, visit buildingberry.ca/ageaccessibility. The city of Berry's Family Fright Fest is taking place on October 26th, 2024 at the Lampman Lane Park and Community Center between 3:00 and 9:00 PM. For information, visit berry.ca/frightfest. And I've gone to that before, it's a, it's a lot of fun. The city Berry is proud to recognize October as the Circular Economy Month and October 21st to October 27th as Waste Reduction Week. For further information or for a list of activities, visit berry.ca/circulareconomy and berry.ca/rethinkwaste. The mayor's annual Christmas card contest is open and residents are invited to enter their photos, drawings or paintings. The submission deadline is being extended to the 30th of October for a chance to be selected as the artwork for the 2024 Christmas card. So please visit berry.ca/cardcontest for the entry form and further details. And Sergio, please remind your father, if that's okay, as he is a former winner of that contest. Bylaws, Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, second by Counselor Corser. Lead be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second and third time and finally passed, Bill 90.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corser. Lead be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 90. Any questions or comments with regards to Bill 90? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Corser. Lead be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second and third time and finally passed, Bill 114.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corser. The confirmation bylaw, that lead be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 114. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the confirmation bylaw? Seeing none, all those in favor. It carries, can I have a mover and seconder for adjournment? Counselor Harvey, Counselor Reema, all those in favor. We are adjourned at 9:22 PM.
That was the update from Berry City Hall. Thank you for watching.